Good morning. At this time, we'll call to the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, June 21. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Klicka.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus is absent. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Chairman Eiler.
Here. We do have a quorum present. Before we begin this morning, I want to note that at this hour, memorial services for Wyandotte County deputies King and Rohr are underway. And I want to take a moment and recognize their service. And if you'll join me in a moment of silence, I'd appreciate it very much. And I would also note that as we together recite the Pledge of Allegiance this morning, let's also keep in mind the pledge that our public safety officials make to protect and serve. And deputies King and Rohr did exactly that and made the ultimate sacrifice in that effort. And I think too many times, we overlook that commitment that all of our public safety officers make. And as we recite the pledge, if we could recognize the commitment that they make and because of that, they put themselves in jeopardy. Would you join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If you, for those who are present, if you have a noise-making device, would ask you to turn it to silent mode or off so as not to interfere with our electronic communications. We have no presentations to make this morning, so we'll turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to address the commission on an item which does not later appear on the agenda, would welcome you to the podium, state your name and address, limit your comments to five minutes, and we'll be glad to receive that Is there anyone to be heard this morning? If not, the public comment portion of our agenda is concluded. I do have several notes for the record. I will be signing the following. A memorandum of understanding with the City of Overland Park and Shawnee to participate in the home improvement partnership, home program, for federal fiscal years 2019 through 2021. A partial release of easement for the Consolidated Main Sewer District due to the removal of sanitary sewer lines at Shawnee Mission Parkway and Hilltop Drive in the city of Shawnee. Two full release easements for the Consolidated Main Sewer District due to the removal of sanitary sewer lines at Belmont Drive and West 68th Street in the city of Shawnee. Two partial release easements for the Consolidated Main Sewer District due to removal of sanitary sewer lines at 183rd Street and Long Street in the city of Overland Park. Two partial release easements for the Consolidated Main Sewer District due to the removal of sanitary sewer lines in the vicinity of 89th Street and Clare Road in the city of Lenexa. And finally, two partial release of easements for the Consolidated Main Sewer District due to the removal of sanitary sewer lines at 167th Street and South Merlin Road in the city of Olahtha. That concludes notes for the record. Turning to the consent agenda, will the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda items?
Item number one, consider reappointing John Staton as the second district representative to the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board through June 30, 2021. Item number two, consider approving the Kansas Department of Transportation's supplemental agreement number one to the master agreement for federal aid statewide bridge inspection. Item number three, resolution number 042-18, consider granting an exemption from the provisions of KSA 41-719D to allow for the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor and the cereal malt beverages at Meadowbrook Park Clubhouse and adjacent areas located at 9101 Knoll Avenue, Prairie Village, Kansas. Item number four, RFP number 2018-011, consider authorizing a term and supply contract with Aramark Correctional Services LLC for managing a school food service program for a not-to-exceed amount of $250,000 for an initial 12-month contract period with the option to renew for four additional 12-month renewal periods.
Is there any commissioner who would like to have an item considered separately?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to remove number three for discussion.
Okay. Any other items? Is there anyone present who would like to have an item considered separately? If not, back before the commission, a motion would be in order to approve all items, the exception of number three. Mr. Allen.
Would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented, except for item three.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item three. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Eiler.
Aye. Motion carried. Item number three, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to bring forward for some additional information that I would like to get from parks about this topic. My concern does not lie in alcohol and being served on-site. That is not my concern. My concern is looking at this, is how these facilities, when we approve the consumption of alcohol, what that, the realm that that puts this venue in, which is good for parks, but it moves it into a realm of competition with the private sector that also supplies venues and alcohol and catering and those kinds of things. And I always struggle with government involved using taxpayer dollars to compete with the private sector and as such, using their tax dollars, their property tax collection dollars, actually in competition against the private sector. So from that perspective, I was looking for some further information. I'd like to understand how the whole process works relative to what is required when, for instance, at Meadowbrook, a wedding venue is allowed to occur, is approved, and they pay the rent for that. I'm interested in knowing, are they, do they provide an insurance policy to indemnify the county? Do, further, do they pick any caterer that they want, or is there a controlled list, or is there a specific vendor that they have to use? If there is a list or controlled vendor, what, how does that, is there money that flows back as a result of that to parks in any way? I'm just trying to get my arms around how this works when we, as county, are competing against the private sector. As a businessman, I would really struggle if the county decided to get into construction management and compete with me. That would not be good. And in this scenario, that's very much where I see us at. We're competing at some levels with the private sector. So if you could enlighten me some there, we could also do this offline. I'm not ready to stop this in any fashion. I'm ready to approve this motion, but I do want an understanding of how this works with charities.
Jill, could you explain from the parks' viewpoint?
Yes, thank you. Jill Geller, Johnson County Park and Recreation District. Good morning, commissioners. And I'm happy to address that question and potential concern. We do simply rent the space to users for their events. They are required to provide an insurance policy. To us, we have specific insurance limits that they must meet that are provided to us by our insurance provider. They can choose any caterer that they want. We don't have a preferred list. We don't have a specific caterer. So we really leave it up to them with the thought that those private businesses are in that business and they can market appropriately to solicit that business. So it's not a realm that we get into. We do get information from them as far as who their caterer will be to ensure that it is a licensed caterer and meets our requirements, but we don't provide any guidelines in that area.
Mr. Allen.
Jill, isn't it true if someone is actually going to sell alcohol or beer, actually sell it, they actually have to go to someone that has a liquor license and operates a business that has that license to do that?
That is correct. JCPRD does not have a liquor license, so we're not in that business, and they must solicit a vendor that does have that license.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? All right, there's no one else to be heard. Mr. Brown?
I have one more. On this, the rental, how do we, do we consider what the private sector charges for like space? When we're, for instance, in this new facility, is there a, a, does management at parks or does the board, do they consider rent rates relative to the private sector and what's going on around them?
We do. We do market comparisons every year so that we're aware of what the market rates are, one, so that we can be competitive, and also that we're being fair.
Okay. Okay. Other questions? All right, do I hear a motion? Ms. Klicka?
I move to adopt resolution number 042-18, granting an exemption from the provisions of KSA 41-719D to allow for the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor and cereal malt beverages at Meadowbrook Park Clubhouse and adjacent areas located at 9101 Knoll Avenue, Prairie Village, Kansas. I can't believe I'm making this motion for someone who doesn't drink.
A bit of irony there. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? All right, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Eiler.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving to the action agenda, next item.
Item number five, consider approving May 31, 2018, business session minutes.
Commissioner Schaefer and Klicka were absent. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been, difficult motion here.
I mean, I had to work for that one.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented, May 31, 2018. Any additions or corrections to be noted? If not, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Absent.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Absent.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Eiler.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number six, resolution number 041-18, application number NW-CU-3385LE. Consider request from Leslie and Mark de Bray Bander, applicant landowners, for a conditional use permit renewal for a contractor shop and yard located at 31715 West 115th Street on approximately 40 acres on property zoned R-U-R rural district.
Yes, Jay.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jay Leipzig, Land Department. This item came out of the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board. Staff recommended approval. The Northwest Zoning Board also recommended approval on May 21, 2018. This item has actually been previously renewed three times. It was originally brought forward in 1997. And just a couple aerial photographs of the, of the facility for the contractor shop and yard. Staff oftentimes uses this as an example of how to properly maintain a property. It's been used several times in our discussions internally about the, just the mechanics of the business, and we use this as an example with our other applications as well.
Questions? Is the applicant present? Any comments? All right, so noted. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission on this item? No one to be heard is back before the commission. A motion would be in order. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. I move to adopt resolution number 041-18, approving a conditional use permit renewal for a contractor shop and yard located at 31715 West 115th Street. For the reasons and subject to the stipulation set forth within the resolution.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution and the application as noted. Any further questions or discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Eiler.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number seven, resolution number 044-18, consider approval to authorize the sale of not-to-exceed $251,595,000 principal amount of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2018A, the Series 2018A bonds.
Morning. Nate Bloom, Budget Office. This item is requesting authorization to sell 251 million of GEO bonds for wastewater projects and voting machines. The anticipated sale date is July 25, and the estimated interest rate is 3.39%.
Okay, this action is to authorize the sale.
Correct.
And sometime in that week of July 25, that's, that's when the actual sale will take place. Is that right?
Correct. We'll be bringing back the parameters resolution in the middle of July, and then that'll set the parameters for when we could sell the bonds.
Okay.
We anticipate it'll be in that week of July 25.
But this is a technical step that we need to take.
Correct.
Okay. Other questions? Ms. Klicka?
This is going off the subject here a little bit, and you may have said this before. When do we anticipate the bond sale relative to the courthouse and coroner's office?
That'll be on the next, next PBC item, but.
Okay, that's what this, this next one is.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone who would like to address the commission on this item? If not, back before the commission, a motion is in order. Ms. Klicka?
I move to approve and adopt resolution number 044-18 to authorize the sale of not-to-exceed $251,595,000 principal amount of general obligation internal improvement bonds, Series 2018A of Johnson County, Kansas.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution and authorize the sale of the bonds as noted. Any further questions? There being none, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Eiler.
Aye. Motion carried. Are there any other items?
No, sir.
All right, moving to reports and communications, Ms. Postock-Ferguson.
Good morning, Chairman and commissioners. You have a number of items in the report this week, but hopefully it'll go fairly quick. The first one is, in your packets, you have this new quarterly update from the research and extension, K-State Research and Extension Office that they're starting to provide. And in this, they highlighted two programs. They did mention during their budget presentation to you, so they may sound familiar, but now that it's being sent out, and we will include those in our packets. One that they highlighted was a volunteer income tax assistance site, and then also the Medicare Open Enrollment Counseling Extension Program. So wanted to make sure that you have that information. The next item is the April addition of the CERI report. Unemployment rate in April was 2.7%. The number of single-family homes sold year-to-date in April cumulative was 2,903, about the same as last year. The number of single-family building permits are up 8% from this time last year. And the full report is attached. The next section is just kind of an update on the TIF project, TIF notification process, because you see a number of these in your packets, and I wanted to explain why you see it multiple times. So when you set, when there's a TIF district that's set up, you'll see it at least twice just to, for the creation of the district. We will get notice of public hearing, and at that point, you do have an opportunity to take action through that process. And then they, after they approve it, then they give notification of that, so, with an ordinance. So you'll see the creation of a district twice. And then you'll see however many number of plans that are within that district, you'll see each plan twice. So I wanted to explain why, the rest of the list, rest of the memo, why you see them multiple times. And we'll try to clarify that for you as we go through the process. But also, this week is this thick, if anybody printed it. So what we're going to try to do is, instead of repeating the same information every time, if you got it the first time in the notice of public hearing, if the approval, if there were no changes, then you won't see anything but just the ordinance or the resolution related to that. So I wanted to clarify that to you. If you have any questions as we go through the process, please let me know. But I was, we're trying to minimize the number, the amount of paper and clarify why you see these multiple times. So with that, I'm going to go through a few that you've seen before. City of Shawnee, the Belmont Promenade Redevelopment Project. So this is a project plan, so you have seen the district creation in the past. This is for the corner of Shawnee Mission Parkway and Marrow Road, and this is notice of city approval. So in the future, if you had seen the packets before, we won't include all the details in the packet the second time. If you do have requests for information, want to see more of it, we'll provide it again. We're just trying to minimize, try to be more green, and then also more efficient with your time. The City of Overland Park, Metcalf Crossing Redevelopment TIF Project. Again, you have seen the TIF creation before, and you have, well, in this case, this is at the northwest corner of Metcalf Avenue and Shawnee Mission Parkway. So this is notice of city approval. So you've seen the creation, and then you've seen the notice of hearing before they did the project plan. Now you're, now you're getting notice that it's been approved. City of Lenexa Redevelopment TIF Project Plan I. So this has obviously had a number of, in the city center area, a number of project plans that have come forward that you've seen when you get to I. You know that there's been multiple ones before that. So this is the adoption of the TIF Project Plan I held. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 17 at 7:00 p.m. And then the City of Miriam amended I-35 Redevelopment District Plan, Project Area. And again, this is a plan, so this is the first step of this plan being amended. Notice of the public hearing, July 23 at 7:00 p.m. The proposed amendment includes the addition of Project Area L. And in the packet, you'll see on the map where that's added. The next one, the City of Overland Park, Blue Hawk Star Bond Project. And star bond projects are similar to TIF districts in that they have those number of steps. This one is the notice of hearing to consider amending the Blue Star Bond Project, generally located at the southwest corner of 159th Street in US 69. The public hearing will be held on July 9 at 7:30. The proposed amendment involves decreasing the number of project areas from four to three. They're just redesigning it, and the details are in the packet. And this, similar to the TIF district creation, the board may officially veto the creation of a star bond district if it is believed to be an adverse effect on the county. So it has to pass that certain criteria. The board may comment on star bond project plans during the hearing, but take no further action. So if there's questions, I'm open to that, and I hope that clarifies why you see it multiple times.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Ashcraft?
Are you done?
Yes. Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Yes, I appreciate the summary and the synopsis that you offered. I was wondering, does the county have, or have we ever considered any policy positions related to TIFs and TIF creations and TIF uses in the county?
I don't believe we have, Don. Are you aware?
The answer is no.
Nope.
Well, with the impact that TIFs have on the county, I'm just wondering why we haven't had those discussions, because they're, they're both good and bad at times. And as they compound over the years, I would think it would be in our best interest to have a position, particularly since each city has their own criteria and their own impact potential. I would encourage us to do that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I think every, every commissioner has the opportunity to voice an opinion at a public hearing in regards to the city's decision. I think I am willing, and I think it's important to rely upon the city's decisions as to the best interest of their communities and the county. So, any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and each commissioner can, but as representatives of the body as a whole, I would suggest that the body as a whole should have that conversation and have those positions, because I think it has long-term implications. And while the cities do have their best interests at heart, I'm not sure that the county's best interests are necessarily given the same, same depth of consideration, and that's why I bring this issue forward again.
Okay, well, if there's a majority of the commission who wants to pursue that, that would be fine, and commissioner's going to let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chairman, there's one more comment that Moore would like to make on the K-State Quarterly Report.
I just wanted to draw your attention to the, to the backside of that, where it talks about the SHIC program, the Senior Health Insurance Counseling for Kansas. It's a free program that offers Kansas the opportunity to talk with a trained volunteer and get answers to questions about Medicare. Some of you who have been on the body for some time may recall that that is a service that county government provided with some small amounts of reimbursement from the state. We made the decision a few years ago that it was not financially sustainable, and we got out of that business. I just wanted to personally offer my thanks to K-State Extension Council and their volunteers for being able to figure out a way to keep that valuable service in Johnson County. So special thanks to the Extension Council.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Nothing further, thank you.
All right, moving to commission comments, Mr. Schaefer.
None today, sir, thank you.
Ms. Klicka?
Nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Ashcraft?
Just one, Mr. Chairman. On an agenda item, we had a consent regarding the Aramac Correctional Food Service.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did I say?
Aramark.
Aramark, I said Aramark. I supported that, and staff was very good. I visited with them, and I appreciated their feedback. The interesting point, Mr. Chairman, that I wanted just to offer as an observation, and I don't know if we can pursue this or not, but we're confined by certain state department, Department of Education bidding requirements that, well, Mr. Chairman, it may be good for the state, and I underscore "may," but it may hamstring us to a certain degree. And I'm just wondering if that is something that we might add to our legislative platform or our efforts with the legislature and the executive going forward, just to offer more flexibility in pursuing those contractual services. And I'm glad to visit with you offline on that, but I mention that because time and time again, it seems like the state has a perspective that isn't necessarily beneficial to at least Johnson County.
Okay, well, I'd ask Mr. Jarrett to look at that and when we begin our consideration of our state legislative agenda, why, we can discuss that, yeah? Okay. Mr. Allen?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the public officials in Johnson County and the various cities in Johnson County. It's my understanding, a lot of people volunteered last night and today to staff the operation in Wyandotte County. I heard that the correction facility in Wyandotte County is being staffed by volunteers completely from the Johnson County Sheriff's Department, so very, very thankful that they're able to do that.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. It's already been stated, so I won't belabor it, but thank you to first responders and public safety folks out there. I know that was a hard, hard, it's still hard, it's going to be hard for a long time on the Wyandotte County side and friends and family on that side. It's been powerful for the whole metropolitan area and a realization of reality, a dose of it, of that things can go wrong, and they're, they're struggling over there. I would point out on a more upbeat note that the courthouse perimeter lines have gone up, the barricades, the plywood, the fencing. It's actually, there's a track over there moving dirt. I don't know that he's doing anything. I think Joe maybe just put him over there just to turn some dirt over and make it look busy. But at any rate, it is starting to take shape and look like a construction site, and it's all very exciting, and I'm thrilled. And is it done yet?
Commissioner, are we done yet? Joe, are we done yet? Oh, okay.
That's all. Thank you, Chairman.
I have one item that we need to take action on in our NACO conference coming up July 13 through 16. We had a brief discussion about this last week, a voting delegate and an alternate delegate. And I think the candidates are Mr. Brown, Commissioner Brown as the voting delegate, and Mr. Thompson as the alternate. So a motion would be in order. Ms. Klicka?
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded to designate Commissioner Brown as our voting delegate. Motion's made and seconded to designate Commissioner Brown as our voting delegate and Mr. Thompson as the alternate delegate to the NACO Conference in July 13th through 16th. Any further candidates there being none? Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clicker?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Mike, how do you want me to vote on this?
We're good.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye, motion carried. Congratulations.
Yes, but, yes. We're all happy.
You're relieved, not happy. Well, you know I'd be happy, but I know you're relieved.
We do have a request for an executive session, which is about a 30-minute time, and Mr. Clicker indicated to me earlier, he has a timetable he needs to meet, and we have agenda review. Let me ask you this, are there members of the public who are here specifically for agenda review? And Mr. Clicker, your time, you're dead?
Eleven thirty.
Huh?
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty?
We're doing pretty.
I think we can, we can, we can do okay. So let's begin our executive session at, what, that would be 10:30?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board recess its open meeting and convene an executive session at approximately 10:30 AM for a period of 20 minutes for the purpose of receiving advice of counsel and to preserve attorney-client privilege, and for an additional period of 15 minutes for the purpose of discussing personal matters of non-elected officials, and to reconvene an open session in this room at approximately 11:05 AM or as soon thereafter as the executive session may end.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the request for the executive session. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clicker?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye, motion carried. Are there any other items? All right, if not, we are in recess, and we'll come back for the PBC spatial meeting, followed by agenda review, followed by the executive session. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Oh, and we do not have an afternoon session today, so. So as soon as we're ready to go, Linda? Let me know.
We're playing around back there.
I thought you were gonna make it down.
Yeah. I'm here. Testing, hello? Okay. Testing, one, two, three. Testing. Do you want me to look flirty anymore? I look great.
The record will reflect that approximately 11:05 we reconvened in open session. We do need to extend executive session. Mr. Allen.
I would move that the board recesses open meeting and convenes an executive session at approximately 11:05 for a period of 10 minutes for the purpose of receiving the advice of counsel of the O B for the purpose of discussing personal matters of non-elected officials and to reconvene in open session in this room at approximately 11:15 a.m. or soon thereafter as the executive session may end.
Sir. Motion has been made second to extend the executive session for the purposes of... Would the court please call a roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klecker.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion, Jerry.
Thank you.
The record will reflect that approximately 11:15, we concluded executive session.